For Piper Shores.
Oh, okay.
They just required as to whether we expected it to happen.
Do they want to say anything? No, okay.
And then they required whether they could or whether we wanted them to respond. And I said only to the council chair if requested.
To respond to any questions that may come out of there.
So you control the information unless there's something burning. Obviously, don't get in or you can take it. But if it's an obvious answer, I'm like, there's one that can be provided. No comment, question?
Yeah. And that does not serve him well, so it almost would be, I mean, I don't know if that's good.
I look, he does have his kind of tea in him, to the extent that that's. Fair enough.
If I'm being honest.
No, I could agree more. I think a lot right now.
A little more arcoos.
I think there's some pressure. They could set the figures as far as I know, I've been doing this already.
That is not.
No?
So that's not something I consider.
No, no, but I'm just, in terms of his mindset, he is anxious.
Yeah, I get it.
It's good to get back home.
He's in tech, is he? Mm-hmm.
So niece or nephew?
Both. So my brother has a boy and a girl who are five months apart. They were adopted from Russia. And, yeah, it was them. So I was telling Tony, my nephew, forty-three college credits already. Because he's, and he's pre-med, he got accepted.
Where's he going?
Michigan State. And, but he almost didn't graduate. He had to turn in a three-page English paper.
Oh, gosh.
Like Dallas, what you're doing.
Yes, he must have got out too, right?
Good question. She did, she came for the weekend.
I think he's read around fifteen.
We were waiting.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, she was supposed to send something, she says, at one o'clock in the morning. I got an email from her, literally, one in the morning saying, yeah, I was supposed to prepare something for the council, but I didn't. I'm like, okay, I'll be surprised.
The recommendation for use of land bonds.
Oh, okay.
Land trust purchase.
Yep.
All right, good evening, and thank you. Welcome to the regular town council meeting. It is June fifth, two thousand nineteen. We do have quite an audience here. It's nice to see so many friendly faces, so thank you for coming out this evening. Just by quick way of, I don't usually sit in this seat. So Councilor Hayes is at the baccalaureate graduation ceremony for his son. So he, I'm filling in this evening, so bear with me as I fumble through Robert's rules tonight. And Councilor Maybank also let us know this afternoon, due to his legislative duties up at the State House, will not be here. So we're a small but mighty crew, and we'll still get through the agenda just fine. So if you'll please join us, we're in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Vibe of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is roll call. Council Johnson.
Here.
Council Katerina.
Here.
Council Donovan.
Here.
Council Hamel.
Here.
And Vice Chair Foley.
Here.
All right, and item four is general public comments. This is a time for anyone who wishes to speak on any topic that is not on the agenda. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Mike Doyle, I'm a Western from Hampshire. But I've lived in two towns, I've made almost my entire life capitalism in Felmouth. But my relationship with Scarborough goes back almost fifty years. I was in Bruce Taylor's house on Sixth Jasper Street, almost fifty years ago, back when I think the fire chief was either before he was born or when he was a dyke. So I've got a long-term connection to this town in a number of areas. And the reason I'm here tonight is that I'm going to comment on the recent promotion of Sajer O'Malley, I guess it was Sajer O'Malley, to Deputy Chief, following the wonderful honorable leadership of Chief Mullin. I'm going to be doing an update on my previous article about Sajer O'Malley that appeared a few months ago. And the update will cover his strong belief in pro-choice. And we'll find out some of the items about his conduct leading up to his belief in pro-choice. So it'll be coming up relatively soon on my website, felmouthtoday dot M E. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on a topic not on the agenda this evening?
I don't think so, the microphone's a little.
Okay, right.
Can you, mine, for example?
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah.
The green light's on, so it says, okay.
Lean in.
I'll lean in.
I think the.
I'll use my teacher voice.
Podium's not working right.
The podium microphone.
Okay, so the podium microphone may not be working right, but I think there's a.
Don't worry, don't worry.
There's a handout. David's got a great teacher voice.
I do have that command voice. Dave Green, one thirty-five Beechridge Road. There's all kinds of things I'd like to address tonight, but I'm going to go to one thing that I've had in the back of my mind about how this council operates for well into a year and a half now.
Back of my mind for about a year and a half now, it goes back to the school board recall, and Avenue Two, and all kinds of issues in this town that this council has divided this town, okay? I'm old Scarborough, and I'm sick of seeing what's going on down here. This is becoming a cesspool. It truly is. And some of you people need to really step up to the plate and start acting like town councillors, okay? And I got another issue. I will ask this council to please start looking into replacing our town manager. I believe it's long past time to do so, at least look into it. Please. It's coming. And that's, thank you.
Second.
Follow the paper. Item number six is adjustments to the agenda, there are none. Item number seven are treacherous boards to be signed, I've already done that, going ahead as a game. And we'll move right on into order number eighteen dash four, zero, four, five. Public hearing can schedule the second reading on the proposed second amendment to the contract zone for the Main Life Care Retirement Community Incorporated, located at five Dorado Drive.
So other members of the public that would like to speak. And I know we have a couple of folks that actually have a presentation that we told them they could start. If you'd let those two go first and then come in behind them, that would be great. Just because they're using some technology. And just for the public's benefit, normally.
Yes.
Normally you would give just a three-minute time period. Because there are a couple of speakers combining their commentary, we're allowing an extended period of time for that. So they'll have six minutes between the two of them.
My turn. Good evening, my name is Donald Semenow. As you may know, my wife and I live at Fort Nook and Ridge. We have been there for well over forty years, totally expecting this area to stay as it is zoned, R F two. As you can guess, we were very much opposed to the original Piper Shores contract zone, but found there was little we could do about it, big money wins. Now here they come again, with a proposal to build on Dorado Drive. As stated when they got their original contract on, they said it was all they wanted. Well, where we are today, a proposal that fires exceeds current density. For this, they need another contract zone, not just a contract zone, but an amendment to their existing contract zone. This way they can avoid notification to abutters, it seems. Seems odd to me this could even be possible, whereas Dorado parcel isn't even in the current existing contract zone. And it isn't even owned by Piper Shores yet. Mind you, we are not opposed to this parcel being developed as zoned. We are very much opposed to the Dorado project as proposed, especially the huge hotel-type building in the middle of it all. Town officials suggested Piper Shores reach out to abutters, but little has taken place. I have an example reaching out. This letter, right here, this little paragraph and a half, they're inviting us to a June thirteenth meeting, neighborhood meeting, with the vote being taken on the nineteenth. That doesn't give much of a chance for us to accomplish a whole lot. Now this letter dated May twenty-ninth, and then knowing the town council scheduled the vote on the proposal less than a week after. How productive do you think this will be? Some reaching out. If, if we were made aware of this project from the very beginning, we would have not, we would not be here tonight. Thank you very much for listening.
Hello, Tim Yeomans of Ten Nook and Ridge Road. I'm here tonight on behalf of also Lori Yeomans of Ten Nook and Ridge Road. I've also been asked to talk by Bob Yentsha of Stone Ridge Road, and Karen Yentsha of Stone Ridge Road. They've yielded all their time to me, but don't worry, I won't use all that time. Three messages I'd like to leave the council with tonight. One, rural farming district. Two, three hundred and forty-seven percent. And that is the amount by which Piper Shores' proposal exceeds the existing and permitted density. Fifty-two units divided by fifteen units, which is the existing and permitted, according to Piper Shores' own analysis. That's three hundred and forty-seven percent. And the third message is be a champion. So where we are now is that when the council votes, they have to make before the vote, according to the Procedure Section, Section four, C two, of the Contract Zoning Ordinance, the council has to make before the vote four findings on four different matters, and all have to be, four of them be approved by the council before the vote actually happens, that's the order in the ordinance. I'm only going to talk about two things, that again, of all four that need to be approved. And these two, we feel Piper Shores fails on. Then we have to fail on one to, for the council to vote it down. We fail, feel they fail on these two. The first one I'm going to talk about is consistency with the comprehensive plan. On page three of your agenda tonight, it says that this agenda item is sponsored by the Planning Department. And not the Planning Board, the Planning Department. And the recommendation is ought to approve. I call your attention also to page twelve of the Comprehensive Plan, that calls in big gold letters on all Scarborough citizens to quote, "Be a champion of the comprehensive plan." It appears that the Planning Director, head of the Planning Department, has chosen to oppose being a champion of the comprehensive plan. This is mind-boggling, because the comprehensive plan should be under the Planning Director, but the Planning Director is. but the Planning Director is recommending that this Piper Shores project ought to be approved by the council. The planning, the Piper Shores' proposal is completely against the core of the comprehensive plan, which is the growth sectors. The growth sectors, the growth framework, in this case, the limited growth sector, is the absolute core. Yes, you could say, I guess the Planning Director is saying that it's, the Piper Shores' proposal is compatible with peripheral issues, but it's not compatible with the core. How can you be a champion of the comprehensive plan if you don't agree with the core of the comprehensive plan? What the Planning Department is doing, and saying to all developers that might develop in Scarborough, is that the Scarborough Planning Department and Scarborough Planning Director is not a champion of the comprehensive plan, and is, does not believe in the core of the comprehensive plan, because this proposal is three hundred and forty-seven percent of the required density. I'd like to also address, now getting on to consistency with the existing and permitted uses of the existing zoning classification. This is the existing land on Dorado Drive. Piper Shores, in their recent submittal, claims that it's compatible because it's a continuing care community. The continuing care community is in a different district, it's down the street. By that logic, Piper Shores could just claim that they're compatible with the Accurate Dealership on Haggis Parkway. It's an absurd justification. They also, Piper Shores is also saying that they're compatible with a rural farming district because they're building nursing homes and boarding care facilities. Yet Section ten of their recent submittal says they're not building nursing homes and boarding care facilities on this parcel. Also, nursing homes require a density lowering of one dwelling unit per five acres. It's the wrong direction from what they're proposing. Also, in the zoning ordinance, boarding care facilities cannot have any kitchens, every one of their units has a kitchen. So this is just a false statement that Piper Shores is making to try to justify compatibility with the rural farming zone. In the huge apartment building, Piper Shores makes the same false statements that they're compatible by having nursing homes, boarding facilities in this proposed parcel, but also they claim that it's compatible because they're building a place of worship. Nowhere have they said they're building a place of worship. They also complain, say that it's compatible because they're making a municipal building. This is news to all of us, they're not building a municipal building. Lastly, they say it's compatible because of residential cluster. The residential cluster portion of the rural farming zoning ordinance says you have to keep the same density. Fifteen units and forty-five acres, okay, they can be clusters, not fifty-two units in forty-five acres. The bottom line here is that this project is dangerous for Scarborough. All future developers will look to this project's proposed three hundred and forty-seven percent of existing and permitted rural farm zone density, and as a precedent. And developers will likely seek the same three hundred and forty-seven percent of existing and permitting, permitted density on, let's say, places like Harmon Island. What about Higgins Beach? Should we allow triple density on Pleasant Hill, Blue Point, Proud's Neck, or North Scarborough? We ask the town council to be a champion, to follow the comprehensive plan, as all of us have been asked by the comprehensive plan, and reject this three hundred and forty-seven percent excessive development. Thank you.
Thank you.
So he wasn't the sixth man?
Good evening, everyone, my name's Bob Dulaq, I live at Six Nook and Ridge, ex-tenant is Lucas Nookum, he lives at Eight Nook and Ridge, and he's here to assist in the small little slideshow we've provided today. Thirteen years ago, my wife and I moved to Nook and Ridge to escape the fishbowl that we lived in for years. The neighborhood consisted of small lots, fifty-foot divisions between each house, everyone knew everyone's business, and everyone knew everyone's gossip. I woke up every morning to my neighbor's alarm clock rather than my own. The lifestyle had grown old and it was time to move. My new Nook and Ridge residents, neighbors arrived escaping, arrived escaping the old fishbowl as well. For us, this section of Scarborough checked off all the boxes, areas of limited development, open space and privacy, its value, protected land and wildlife, access to beaches and protection from overdevelopment through our current RF zoning requirement. The Route seventy-seven quarters you see on the screen is possibly the most beautiful sector the town has to offer. We have ocean views, ocean access, we have marshland, we have inlets, we have rivers, we have open space. If you look at the Dorado Drive, which you probably can't see from there, it's somewhere in the middle of the light green, and the light green is the RF zone, the rural farming or the rural residential. Around that light green is the dark green, which is the resource protection with no developments allowed whatsoever. I guess our point is, if you look at where Dorado Drive is, everything around it is either a light green or a dark green, the map clearly shows that the limited growth is in, that limited growth is what our area is all about. We believe this is what Scarborough wants, and this is made clear with the comprehensive plan and the limited growth sector, and I know we've been redundant, but I'm going to read it one more time as you look at it. Scarborough has rural zoning districts with two-acre minimum lot size requirements, hoping to conserve the natural qualities of the rural open space. The purpose of these districts is to lower the overall population density, to protect the environmentally sensitive areas, as well as maintain larger tracts of land for resource uses, but allow some development and flexibility. The town's desire to cease development, but was subject development under current zoning such as the RF zoning on Dorado Drive. We believe we got there, but the lack of notification allowed to us with no voice at the first reading of the town council on June twentieth of two thousand and eighteen. That had to do with amended contract zone versus new contract zone. An amended contract zone didn't require any notification to the abutters, and I think in the clip we're about to show, not having the abutter input led us down to this road. Lucas, I don't know if you have, if you can play that clip?
I'll play.
I attended the public hearing for the neighborhood, and the meeting went well. Most of the people from the neighborhood were from the Acorn Street area, and some of whom I know, and so I was encouraged that the two subdivisions that run astride this proposed development seem to be on board with it. I think that's very important, because we are placing a higher density than the current zoning allows. See, no further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and answering all our questions.
So that inaccurate representation led to the mistake of approval, and allowed this proposal to move to the Planning Board. I want to repeat, Chairman Donovan, and I'm going to repeat exactly what he said, the two subdivisions that run astride this proposed development seem to be on board with it. I think that's very important, because we are placing a higher density than the current zoning allows. If our being on board with it on June twentieth of two thousand and eighteen was important then, why isn't it important now, June fifth, two thousand and nineteen, one year later? We agree with Council of Donovan, that density is much higher. We agree with Council of Donovan, abutters need to be on board. The small public meeting he was referring to was a private Piper Shores event that Nook and Ridge residents were not invited to. The abutter opposition is clear to this day. We believe, and I have had discussions with some councils, had the councils been aware of the universal opposition that this proposal would have paused at that point at that meeting. Our concern now is because of Piper Shores' apparent significant money spent to the Piper Shore, by Piper Shores, the town is doing all it can to justify the approval of this proposal which is wrong. Looking at all non-Piper Shore contract zone, it is clear that all non-Piper Shore contract zones have been and are consistent with the comprehensive limited growth sector, have been and are compatible with the pre-existing and permitted uses, and require small tweaks and changes. The Accurate Dealership which was referred to this evening is what a contract zone should look like. Piper Shores, in our view, appears to be getting a free pass as the largest taxpayer of Scarborough. We see no reason why Piper Shores should be allowed to bypass the RF zoning ordinance and/or the comprehensive plan. Piper Shores simply does not belong on Dorado Drive, it is in fact a square peg not fit in, not fit in a round hole, that won't fit in a round hole. The reasons are numerous, and I'll state a few. Piper Shores is three hundred and forty-seven percent over the allowed density, fifty-two to, versus fourteen or fifteen units. Piper Shores is not compatible with the Dorado Drive existing zoning clarification. Piper Shores is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and the limited growth sector. Piper Shores is not designed for Scarborough residents. Piper Shores provides no on-site affordable housing. Piper Shores allows low-paying jobs and high turnover. Piper Shores threatens our water table.
I am going to ask you to watch the time, okay? Because I think there was some confusion around how many six-minute segments you might get. Are you almost done?
I'm curious to know just about there, I'm sorry.
Great, thank you. That's okay, thank you.
Piper Shores provides no skilled nursing. Piper Shores provides no elderly boarding care facilities, and Piper Shores ignores an abundance of other compatible and available land available in Scarborough as we speak. Please, our voices do matter. We are important, we are not on board, please deny this project, and thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, sorry, she was, had lined up ahead and then, is that okay? We can all share.
Thank you. I'm Betty Perry, I live at twenty-four Drake Lane in Piper Shores, and good evening. My husband Duncan, who is teaching tonight, and I believe that failing to approve the Piper Shores contract zone amendment application is a lose-lose scenario. Here's why. Piper Shores has proven to be an important part of the Scarborough community over the last eighteen years. We're the largest taxpayer in Scarborough and pay approximately one point five million yearly in property taxes. We shop, eat, receive medical and dental care, buy gas, and bring significant business to the Scarborough community. Moreover, we use few public services and have no children in the school system, and so are not on a drain, not a drain on the community in these areas. Piper Shores residents are very civic-minded professional people. Neglecting to take account of or value the intellectual and professional resources that residents and staff bring is very short-sighted. Should the expansion occur, much more such involvement can be expected as both staff and resident numbers increase. In January Duncan and I conducted a survey of the two hundred and sixty Piper Shores independent living residents, and found that a hundred and twenty-four respondents have been or are currently volunteers with over seventy-one different local and state organizations. Nearly twenty percent of that number have served as officers. On top of all the thousands of hours of time and talent that we have aptly given, we have also provided financial and in-kind donations to more than a hundred and six different local and regional operations. The public benefit that Piper Shores offers thus seems clear. Allowing us to construct the meadows will, one, boost local business income, two, require minimal public services, three, add more citizens dedicated to community volunteerism and charitable support, four, provide new recreational trails for public use, five, conserve approximately twelve and a half acres of land for posterity, and six, significantly increase the town's annual tax basis. And the good news continues. Our residents go to bed early, are not noisy, do not litter or clutter property, we maintain their surroundings well, they, we are considerate of and welcoming to neighbors who use the grounds. I urge you to support this opportunity to enhance growth and be assured with rock-solid certainty that Piper Shores is and will continue to be a highly conscientious and constructively involved member of Scarborough. Please join us as a partner in responsible community development. We love being here, and we totally support Scarborough and want to continue to be a strong supporter. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sheila Hillman, I live at Three Wildwood Lane, if I were wise, I would just take my seat now and say what she said. But actually, I want to speak to you tonight as an abutter to the original project at Three Wildwood Lane. At that point, my husband and I also owned one Wildwood Lane, which was a direct abutter. And when the project was announced, I wondered and fretted about the impact it would have on my neighborhood, and more specifically on my own home, which is close to Route I worried about increased traffic, I worried about decreased water pressure in my own home, I worried about noise, I worried about where the retention cones would be, I even worried about how many lumens would be released into the night sky. And I just want to state in the night, that none of those figures was realized. These people have been good neighbors, as was aptly mentioned by the previous person, and I wanted to address my other neighbors who were here tonight, so worried about having this really nice community in their neighborhood. Piper Shores has been kind of a noseam. You can't see it from the road, but you can feel that they're contributing a great deal financially to the town, you know that they are also serving on many boards, and I'm sure the same will be true of the proposed community, which is probably largely not seen by the naked eye. So I'm here in support of that community, I would just like also to add that there are Scarborough residents waiting to have a place in Piper Shores. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lucia Jones, I live at Fourteen Oak Lane, I'm an abutter, and I've been to several of these meetings, and I appreciate everyone's efforts to come together, but I do have to say that here we are a year later, and it's been a challenging situation, just as, given the perspective of those of us that are abutters, just to keep up with what is going on with this project is very challenging. As a full-time person working, you know, having a family, other neighbors on Acorn Lane, there's eighteen houses, there are all of us trying to keep up, the email about what is the process here, this has been very challenging to keep up with, it's a huge project. And we all, as you know, you have the decision in your hands to make a decision of whether or not this project will go forward. For us, we bought into this neighborhood with a promise, that's an RF zone, that we would have this privacy, and all of the reasons that have been listed about, the pluses of having Piper Shore project go forward are great, but you know what, having houses back there would be great too. Those families that would purchase those homes would be just as good, an environment, volunteering in the community, contributing to Scarborough, all of those things, to dismiss the fact that the way it is would be a negative is ridiculous. These people, and especially Nook and Ridge residents, are going to be facing the four-story apartment building. People would not be objecting so much to townhouses or independent living, that would not be, you know, we would not be here a year later. The sticking point is the four-story commons that we have had to think about, this is a huge, it's tripling the size, if not ten times the size of what exists there. That seventy-five-hundred-square-foot house that McDonald's have will come down, and they'll put up a huge building that we'll have to look at forever, forever changing why we bought into the neighborhood. And the things that concern me as an individual abutter is the fact that this can happen again, you know, if this project goes through, there's still two other parcels of land that are next to that. If those owners want to sell to Piper Shores, they could possibly expand again, ask for another amendment, and continue to build, you know, again disrupting what we bought into twenty, thirty years ago as this project. So you hold the responsibility of thinking through all of these things. And so I just want to really... And so I just want to really, I guess, just articulate that it has been just so challenging just to keep up with what is the process. Because the average person doesn't understand the changes of RF zone after they've purchased a property like this. And I would say that it's been, there were very little changes that were done until February with Piper Shores. We met several times with them, emails, community meetings, but it may have been maybe more useful for the town to just meet with the abutters. But that could have been an option, but you know, if you were just having these individual meetings, so it just seemed very time-consuming. I also just want to read a letter that my husband wrote. He was not able to be here, but I'm hoping that you received this.
I'm sorry, we're actually going to read it.
Oh, okay.
For him, because your time is out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, she can read it.
She can read it.
Okay, you want to give her another?
Absolutely. Better than me.
You probably know your husband's inflictions.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a physical copy.
Okay, I'm sure you do, but I'm just reading it for the benefit of the public.
Is it easier than reading off the phone?
Okay, thank you so much. Yes, my husband is Jeff Jones, 14 Acorn Lane, and he was not able to be here. But as an abutter to this project, we've had two main objections to the project. The first is the size and location of the commons. The second is the lack of the pedestrian travel and the increased traffic to this project and the current proposed amendment that have had on Spurwick Road and the fact is not being addressed by the applicant. Regarding the large 94,000-square-foot building named the commons, we believe it is too large and too tall of a structure. The height limit in Scarborough is 35 feet. The proposal calls for 40 feet in height. This allows basically a four-story building to shadow over the residence of Newcombe, which will easily be seen from House on Acorn Lane. As you know, through the sidewalk, when we were standing at the location of the proposed apartment building, I pointed out my yellow house that could be entirely changed from our vantage point, the 40-foot building. It may be years before this is enough growth for new trees to adequately buffer Acorn Lane residents from light, noise, sight, and large building. This is especially true given the construction of the estates, which will require removal of much of the existing tree coverage to construct these homes. If those trees were replaced with 12-foot-high trees, in the event the apartment building will be visible from many of our street's residents, we believe that the height should be reduced, perhaps underground parking or placement of the building in front of the highest point of the land, so the building fits into the topography much better. We've always believed in the pocket neighborhood. The estates are compatible with the RF zone, and we have no objection whatsoever to those houses. In the RF zone, this is the type of development that everyone expected. The commons, on the other hand, is not compatible with the existing and permitted uses of the RF zone. There is also a serious question if the commons is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I would not call a four-story 94,000-square-foot consistent with any location in a limited growth sector. The major issue that we have with the lack of improvements to Spurwick Road, Route 77, is in light of the Piper Shores development. Since the Piper Shores contract zone of 1998, there have been no widening of the road, no sidewalks, no white lanes. This area has a high use of recreation area in the town with hundreds of people bicycling every day, pedestrians, hundreds of summer residents walking to and from Higgins Beach. In 1998, it was estimated that between 100 to 200 cars per hour during peak hours, morning and night. There have been no studies done to see what guess to make are accurate. Memorandums and the letters relied upon by the DDP and the MDOT in 1998 are not in any file and not in any town's file, nor the MDOT files, not even in the MDP files. However, if the best guess of 200 cars equivalents an hour in 1998, the fact that the project has generated, this does not take into account the 10 amendments to the site plan subdivision that have taken place since 1998. The major changes are as follows. In 2002, 45 additional parking spaces were added to increase pavement of dragway. In 2010, increased parking again with additional 34 spots. The healthcare facility, the pool, the fitness center, the construction nurse's auditorium. In 2013, again, more parking was added, 11 spots. In 2015, construction of a three-story building, 22,300-square-foot building, adding an arts building, and a significant expansion to the parking lot. As you can see from the above summary, these are just a few of the amendments to the project since 1998, and there's been a significant amount of buildings and parking added to the project. This means more cars and trips. No one at the town or the state has had any idea of the impact of these amendments on traffic. No studies were ever done, no updates or figures or data, nothing. And now the town once again is contemplating allowing an applicant, Piper Shores, to amend its 1998 proposed amendment. With absolutely no traffic studies provided to outline the true impact of increased traffic from this project. By the proposed amendment before the council now, the applicant indicates only a grand total of 130 trips per day, 65 entering and 65 leaving. Any common sense would tell a person that there are at least 52 residents on a street, this number would be woefully low. Add to this number the daily shuttle between the campuses, the maintenance crews going between the campuses, and 20 employees, delivery trucks, restaurants, the commons, the vendors. It is evident that this estimate doesn't pass the straight-faced test. The comprehensive plan for connectivity of the neighborhoods and villages, the proposal falls short on this. The residents will be isolated from surrounding neighborhoods at Higgins Beach. The MDOT will not allow crosswalk from this project across 77. Even if it were allowed, no one is going to use it. He or she cares about their safety because they're running too fast. The only safe travel is for sidewalks along 77 down to Ocean. This will connect this project to the beach community and allow safe travel for cars and pedestrians. For a $45 million project which is asking for a complete zone change from the town, I am not sure of the hesitation by the town by requiring the applicant to improve safety and roads as they are directly entered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Art Dillon. I live on Black White Road. I'm here representing the Scarborough Chamber of Commerce as our current president. These comments also echo my own personal feelings. As a community of business owners and operators, the Scarborough Chamber of Commerce sees enormous financial and social value in Piper Shores' proposed expansion at Dorado Drive. Piper Shores has already demonstrated it's not only a good neighbor, but it's a generous, thoughtful, reliable, and responsible neighbor in its 18-year operation. While most nonprofits are exempt from property taxes, Piper Shores has agreed from day one to pay its taxes for its independent living residents, contributing close to $1.5 million annually. The enormous benefits of working and living in Scarborough have not been lost on its residents, as have been mentioned earlier. They have contributed a wealth of time, talent, to worthy causes across our town, including the Scarborough Land Trust, the public library, the public safety and fire department, the schools, Project Raze, Can't Catch a, Operation Hope, and many other financial organizations. With this new project, we can expect another 85 residents becoming active Scarborough citizens, volunteering, donating, working, buying goods and services in our community. We also believe these residents will be thoughtful neighbors. Piper Shores is a known entity with the highest reputations, not just here in Scarborough, but the state and the region, in quality, quantity, and being a great community member. They've also agreed to preserve land, provide public parking, to access trails, contribute to the town's affordable housing program, contribute funds for sidewalk installations, add buffers, berms, mature trees. Being the oldest state in our country, there is a huge need for senior life care communities in our state. There's room for this addition, which also adds value to our town. As member of the business community, we do not and must not underestimate the value their presence brings to our town. It's for this reason stated that we enthusiastically support and strongly recommend the expansion on Dorado Drive. Again, that also echoes my personal feelings. I also have, I don't know if you've received a letter from the Portland Regional Chamber? Okay. I just want to say that's been submitted from the Portland Regional Chamber. The CEO Quincy Hensel and the board chair, Val Swallow, have submitted a letter in favor, echoing those feelings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Everson. I live at 16 Drake Lane. And many of my comments have already been said, so I won't repeat them. I'll leave you here brief. But I think one of the most important things that we need to realize here is that Piper Shores is not just for the elite. 25% of the units that are there are subsidized. The revenue is, the revenue that people pay per month is less than what it costs to operate the property for their benefit. So they're, in a sense, subsidized by the larger units. So it allows people of a more moderate income to be there. I think that's something that gets lost. And I think that from my perspective, in listening to the numerous benefits that we've had listed here tonight, I just think it would be very hard for a town council person to vote against the project. It has so much value for the community of Scarborough as a whole, not only just the tax benefit, but all the other wonderful things that we've enumerated that we offer. So I hope that you'll really consider approving the project.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alice Driver. My name is Anne Funderberg. I live in apartment J210 at Scarborough Drive in independent living. I don't know. Anyway, I'm concerned about some remarks I've heard retailed about reactions to this project. One of them was to the effect that it would bring in a really lower-class group of people as workers. And I was really shocked to hear that because I have never run into anybody on staff who is inconsiderate, ill-mannered, unsympathetic. I've talked with groundskeepers, I've talked with nurses, I've talked with the handyman, I've talked with everybody. And I find that they all understand, those of us who are getting older and sometimes have memory problems or lose our balances, which is why I have this, they put up with us cheerfully, courteously, in a warm and understanding way. And I cannot imagine that the expansion, if it goes through, would hire anything less than that. That is what people want when they come to the end of their lives. They don't want to be in an area where people are unkind or rude. They want to be in a warm, accepting, comfortable area. And that is what I have found here. I have never lived in this kind of housing in my life. I've always lived in a house. And I was really worried about what it was going to be like in Piper Shores. And I am absolutely amazed. I would never have believed that I would feel as comfortable, as accepted, and as part of the community. It's very difficult at the age of 80 to suddenly encounter a whole new community of people whom you've never met before, much less try to remember their names. And it doesn't matter if I don't remember the names of whoever cleans my house, my room for me, or if I don't remember who the nurses are, or that kind of thing. They all know me, peculiar voice, very tall. And as a result, I feel completely accepted, and I cannot believe that there would be anything different if Dorado Drive were to be developed. I hope that you will support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Delafield. I live at 21 Drake Lane in Piper Shores, and I'm a registered voter in Scarborough. I came with a prepared list of all the benefits to the town from the proposal. I will skip that because you've already heard most of those, and I hope you will take them into account. I want to comment on a couple of things that have been said. You heard recently a lot about parking and traffic. It's my understanding that all of the technical aspects of this proposal have been thoroughly investigated by the planning board, and the planning board has approved it. I also heard the abutters talking about how value, how much value they place on the resource protection, existing resource protection district. I hope you understand that that is Piper Shores' property, that that was part of the original contract zone, and the resource protection was agreed to by Piper Shores at the time. And the current proposal includes adding additional land to resource protection so that it will be, in fact, an increase in the resource protection. I heard some of the abutters talking about how they felt they had not had adequate notice or adequate chance for input to this. I hope you will, I think the information has been given to you of the many, many meetings that have been held with abutters, to which abutters were invited, that the abutters have been listened to, that many concessions have been made to the Piper Shores plan to accommodate the interests of the abutters. And so I hope you will take that into account. In my judgment, as far as the town council's current question, do we approve this contract zone or not? On the one hand, you have the promise of very substantial tax revenues from the proposal, estimated to be in the nature of half a million dollars per year, with virtually no demand on the town's services. On the other hand, if it's not approved, but the property is developed, as was suggested earlier, you would have single-family homes, I presume, there, probably with children who have to be educated at a cost to the town of, I don't know what, $15,000 a year or more per student. We at Piper Shores don't produce children anymore. And so that demand will simply not be there. So I think it's a very clear and easy decision for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Young. I live at 2 Newcombe Ridge. Like my neighbors, I'm pretty dismayed by this whole project. And one of the things that's kind of getting lost in all this cool stuff about Piper Shores is the due process. That we saw Mr. Donison just shooing things through, that's what we're feeling right now. So please take that into account. I hope that you guys will give us due process and do this the right way. See a little history where it doesn't look like that might be the case. So please, here's our, thank you.
All right, that looks like the end of public comment. We'll move on to our next order of business. I need my cheaters. Order number 19031, a 7:00 p.m. public hearing, second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 405, zoning ordinance, section 12, not H. Okay, the second reading for, just for those of you who are, we're here for the Piper Shores project, the second reading will be on June 19th. I'm going to give it just a minute for them to settle on out. Jay, Chase, if you'd like to provide any background or context for the next three items, you can stand close to the podium. I think we've beaten it up pretty well, but you can just get, for the benefit of the audience, just give a quick summary.
Quick control? Okay, great. Let's see, so this first one is on the amendments to the sign provisions of the zoning laws for campus directional signage. So this is actually a proposal that's coming through, a recommendation from our long-range planning committee, and as we talked about it, first reading. The stated purpose for campus directional signs is to provide assistance to the public in finding specific businesses or locations within a unified development or a large multi building or lot development. And so many of our, or all of our larger- And so many of our, or all of our larger commercial zones that have this sort of ability for multiple buildings, multiple lots, are able to put together a campus directional signage package and be reviewed by the planning board. It was noticed in a recent review that that type of campus directional signage isn't allowed in the crossroads planned development district, commonly referred to as the downs development. The crossroads planned development district really calls for coordinated development throughout the whole project, and campus directional signage plays a key component in that. So the proposal is simply to add an allowance within the zoning ordinance to allow campus directional signs to be utilized within the crossroads planned development district.
Great. Thank you. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Take it.
And discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. And that moves leads us to order number 19-032, public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendment to Chapter 405B, the site plan review ordinance, section 3B, site plan application procedures and action. And this actually came from the ordinance committee, so I'll refer to the chairwoman.
And I will refer to Mr. Jay.
There you go. Pass the buck tonight.
Easy enough. Happy to do it. So as you just noted, at the request of the ordinance committee, staff had a few meetings with the committee to talk about, this is really about notification for site plan applications. Site plan applications, for those who don't know, are for any non-residential, commercial-type uses, or for multifamily apartment-type developments required to go through planning board review process through the provisions that are laid out in our site plan review ordinance. Currently, the site plan review ordinance does not have any requirement for direct, for notification to abutters. Certainly, we post the agenda on the website, and we have sort of an email list, but we know that folks, you know, beyond all those lists are coming and looking at our bulletin board here at Town Hall. So I think the consideration from the ordinance committee was, is there a way we can try to mimic some of our other ordinances, such as our subdivision ordinance, or our Board of Appeals process, which requires notification of abutters within 500 feet? And so that's the proposal that's before you. You have draft language that identifies that for any site plan application that comes into our department for review by the planning board, there will be direct notar, abutter notification, or within 500 feet, I should say, of the application.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Oh, sorry. Oh, and second reading. Oh. Sorry. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none? Come back to, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I'd just like to say, this is one of those things that flies under the radar and doesn't get a whole lot of attention, but I wanted to commend the ordinance committee because this is something that's going to mean a lot to somebody when it happens. And I think that this was a fantastic reaction to a couple of residents' concerns, and notifying abutters when something's going to happen near them will, can only do good. So I just, I know, again, this isn't much fanfare, but I think this is a great improvement. So thank you for it.
All right. All those in favor? And that is unanimous as well. And that will move us on to order number 19-039, a public hearing in action on the new request for a massage license for, and I apologize if I butcher the name here a little bit, but Yacelis Tuie, doing business as Yacelis Tuie Massage Therapy, located at 10 Plaza Drive, Suite 203.
This is standard procedure for a first applicant. Everything is in order. Background checks came in. Recommend approval.
Great. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on massage therapy? Seeing none. Move to, is there a motion to approve?
Taken.
And any discussion? This is where I might say, could other samples? In the spirit of Councilor Kiyazah.
I think one.
Yeah, me too. Because they probably need the practice, right? So all those in favor? And that is also unanimous. Moving on to old business, we have order number 19-033, a second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 601, the traffic ordinance, section 2 Higgins Beach, and section 4-2 Pine Point Co-op. This came out of the ordinance committee. And Chairwoman Caterina would like to offer any context? We've been through it before, but...
Yeah. Again, these just came about from either the police department or just some changes made at the Pine Point Co-op, and have been heard by ordinance, came out of ordinance, and they're back before us today for the hearing.
And is there any member of the public who wished to speak on this item?
My name's Dave Green. I live at 135 Beechtree Road. As I said last month, when you brought this up, nobody made any comments, and I asked questions. I hope someone from the ordinance committee is going to have the courtesy to address how you get around taking four more commercial fishermen's lots and turning them into handicap. Has anybody bothered to call the DMI and ask them if they approve? I hope somebody will address that tonight. I'm not threatening you, but I'm going to make a complaint. That is a covenant area, and you continue to pin cricket until it's all going to be gone for the commercial fishermen. I hope somebody will step up the plate tonight and explain to me how you benefit commercial fishermen with four handicap spots down there. Please, explain that. You have the time now. I get all three minutes. You guys get all night. But I'd love to hear somebody answer that for me. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment. And do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Take it.
And discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just mention a couple of things about this. You know, there was a small language change, primarily around the Pine Point Co-op parking that Mr. Green has referenced. And this, I have to admit, and I was responsible for trying to shepherd this back and forth to committees, and we even got an opinion from outside council on this around a wording change concerning commercial vehicles, unauthorized commercial vehicles using the dirt parking lot area. The issue, and I'm not going to vote in favor of it, I know this is pretty far down the road, however, it does underscore the fact that there are unresolved issues concerning conflicting pressures, competing demands on the space down at the Pine Point Co-op. So I just, I think we're going to be revisiting this in one fashion or another as time goes by, so it's just a caution. But I look forward to us learning more about it and actually studying the area and looking at it more closely as a council. And there are some suggestions for how we might do that, including a site walk, as well as providing the counselors with a detailed map that actually shows covenant-protected areas and other areas that are being improved as we speak in terms of lines being painted and so forth. So just a cautionary note, I'm not voting in favor of it, but I understand the reasoning for why it's gotten to this point, and do share some similar frustrations about it. But I'm confident we, if we keep focus on it, we will ultimately be able to resolve these issues, hopefully.
Any other councilor discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Is there an articulation why there was four spots that were handicapped versus, let's say, two? Is there, is there a rationale behind the four, so to speak? And I'm asking as somebody who's wasn't in attendance.
I missed the last meeting because I was out of town, so I...
I don't remember. I can't, I'm not remembering.
There are federal requirements in terms of the percentage of parking, handicap spaces as compared to the number of other public spaces.
Yep.
And I can't say for certain, but I expect that recommendation was based on that ratio. I can say for certain, though, the proposal in the next to the back row, as it's referenced, is outside of the covenant area. It's on town-owned land, and therefore not subject to the restrictions of the covenant.
Right. Yep. And I agree with everything Tom said. One thing I may add is that, you know, there's always sort of the plan and reality, what actually happens down there. It is bound to be the case this summer, usually right around the Fourth of July, but where people will be parking where they're not supposed to be parking, and we're going to rely on folks to help us, you know, work our way through that. There's a general issue with undesignated spaces that are covered by the, by the lease agreement that we've negotiated with, with the folks who bought the Co-op. So I think everyone's well-intentioned. We want to get at the right answer here, and I think we can work through it, but we're going to have some bumps along the way.
Counselor, Caterina, sorry.
Remind me, this went to the Shellfish or whatever community?
It did.
Coastal Waters?
Yep. It came to ordinance, and then we said we wanted to get their input. They suggested some language changes that involved the commercial vehicles and the unpaid dirt parking lot. That was recommended, that we strike that, based upon advice from outside council, and that's, that's the form that it's in now, so.
Yeah. And I know Mr. Mazzone was, was fine with this the way it is, too, so that's why I urged support for this tonight.
Yeah, my recollection was that, yes, we sent it to that committee. We got no rebuttal or feedback back.
Yep.
And then we sent it to our own council to make sure that we were in compliance with the new agreement down in, with the Co-op.
Right.
And that, that actually prompted some language changes.
Right.
Just if I could, I think it's important to think about and remember the genesis of this. This has been actually, it started at the Coastal Waters Committee some years back. Rather sheepish to admit how long it's been in process, if you will, but it really was designed intently to provide protections for parking purposes for commercial fishermen in terms of actually designating signing spaces and having it ordained such that we can enforce it. I guess the other point worth making, you may recall through the budget process, we've shift staff, the oversight of that lot to the police department. And so we expect that will put us in the best position for enforcement purposes. That's always a challenge, but having reserve officers and the marine patrol officer working from that location, we believe puts us in the best position to actually enforce the requirements of this ordinance.
And I guess I would, oh, sorry?
Can I just ask?
Yep.
The four handicap, is that's total for that entire lot? Is that correct? When, is that four in addition to some that already exist? Or is that, is that four more? Is that four total? I guess my question.
There are additional ones close to the water. I honestly can't say how many.
I think there are two.
There's at least two along the shorefront, as I recall.
Yeah, I think there are two.
I can't recall. I can't recall exactly.
So we're saying there's approximately six if, okay.
Okay. All those in favor? All opposed? Four, that's four one. All right. And we'll move on to order number 19-040, Act on the Request to Approve the Names to the Various Committees and Boards That Were Posted at the May 15 Town Council Meeting. Would you like to...
And I can read those if you, if you like.
Sure.
Coastal Waters and Harbor Committee, Mr. Michael Slaven will move from first alternate to full-voting position with term to expire in 2021, and Mr. Vincent Clow as first alternate with a term to expire in 2021, replacing Mike Slaven. Shellfish Conservation Commission, Barney Martin is appointed as the first alternate with a term to expire in 2019. Transportation Committee, Katie Fellows is recommended for approval as appointment to the first alternate with a term to expire in 2020. And finally, for the ZBA, the zoning board of Beals, recommendation to appoint Alton Chip Howe as first alternate with that term to expire in 2019.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public would like to speak about appointments? Seeing none? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Take it.
And councilor discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Move on to new business. We've got order number 19-041, a first reading, and refer to the planning board, the proposed changes to Chapter 405, the town of Scarborough zoning ordinance, section six definitions. And this came to us by way of the Housing Alliance.
Yes. If I could introduce?
You, please.
It's a, it's a very simple change, changing two words in the, in the definition of affordable housing. Those two words end up being very important. Some of you may recall, there was a series of changes that came to the council that you approved. I will admit, they were a bit convoluted, and frankly, in that course of that back-and-forth, this was an oversight. This was always the intention of the Housing Alliance, and this particular section really serves the purpose of helping the developer fix a sale price and market these lots. And it's the way of determining the household income that's allowable for a qualified purchaser. So this change is highly recommended by the committee, and we look for your support.
And do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Take it.
Counselor discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Oh, did any member of the public want to say anything about? No. Moving on. Order number 19-042, first reading and scheduled public hearing on the request to amend Chapter 1016, the garage yard sale ordinance. This also came out of the ordinance committee, and I'll let Chairwoman Caterina introduce this as well.
Yes, thank you. This became about because of a service group in Town Alliance Club in particular that does yard sales to raise money so that they can stay in existence. And we talked about this on ordinance. We want to make sure that it's not abused by increasing the number of yard sales people can haul, but we feel like, you know, increasing it just makes sense, both for groups who use it for fundraising, because an awful lot of yard sales in Scarborough are used for fundraising purposes for various groups, too. So we felt this was a good, a good balance. So that's where this came from.
And is there any member of the public who would like to talk about yard sales today?
I think they have too many down Pine Point. They've caused up the traffic.
Come on up.
You've got to step up to the podium if you want to be official here.
Give us your name and address.
Michael Sawyer, 74 Sawyer, honest. Small traffic terrorist. It was 74 Sawyer, wrong, too, you, you guys made me change it. Yeah, there's too many down Pine Point. They seem to be, every year, same houses doing it, weekend after weekend after weekend. I thought there was a limit of two a year by a house, but these people seem to do it every weekend. There ought to be a stop to it, especially down Pine Point when the traffic is high volume.
Thank you. All right. So closed public comment. And is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And counselor discussion? Counselor Johnson?
In my perfect world, there'd be yard sales all day, every day. Because that's what I do on my Saturday mornings. But I, I have to agree with a member of the public, there are some standing yard sales in the Pine Point area. You are absolutely correct. And there are some standing yard sales off Broad Turn Road that are every single weekend. So I would just add that I, you are correct about that, and so, but I love yard sales.
Counselor Caterina?
I would say that these continuous yard sales are probably in violation of our ordinance, and for whatever reason, people need to be made aware of that. So I would just tell the public, if you're aware of someone who's doing continuous...
They're allowed to park in Town of Scarborough. The police enforce it when they want them.
Well, whatever. What would be helpful is that if you're aware of, and this is for you or anybody else in the public, of someone who's continuously doing yard sales, to, you can call the police. And if you don't want to call the police on someone, I hate to say, call Tony Justice, our town clerk, but you could do that and find out.
We do have a list of those who are supposed to have yard sales, and that's shared with the police department every weekend, so.
So just let us know, all right?
The other counselor?
I can make a comment on that alone. Call on the police.
Afterwards, afterwards.
Yeah, no, I would just, I think a couple of what Counselor Caterina said is that I do think this is probably one of those ordinances, that people, A, don't fully know or understand that there is an actual limit, and B, that it becomes a matter of whether or not we are following our own ordinance or not. And that's a problem on a lot of different things, so I would agree with you there. That said, we did, in this particular instance, make a few tweaks to accommodate the Lions Club. They're not in a residential area. They're hosting their yard sales for the purposes of funding their organization. So with that, I will take a vote. All those in favor?
I will take a vote. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Moving on to non-action items, are none. And we'll go to standing and special committee reports and liaison reports. And we'll start down on the left because these gentlemen are going to be very quick. Counselor Hamel?
One, Peter is not here to speak for the finance committee, but, you know, wanted to thank Sean Baybine again for his service on that committee. It was actually, you know, really good working with him and, and Peter this year. The only thing I'm going to say is that come out and vote on June eleventh. That's the only thing I'm going to say about the finance committee. Appointments, nothing further to report there beyond the recommendations that were approved. And I had one quick update for, for Echo Maine. I'm going to be joining Mike Shaw as a voting member on the executive committee there. And we are having a, an annual board of directors meeting on Thursday, June twentieth. So I look forward to sharing with Mike, who's really been a key, key person on that, on that group and following in the big shoes of Bill Donovan, who served in that role at Echo Maine.
Thank you. Counselor Donovan?
Rules and policies committee met. We had three items on the agenda. We made a small change to rule two hundred eight A to just clarify a matter that will be coming forward to the town council soon. We have been working on a TIF, Credit Enhancement Agreement, policy for quite some time. And that finally got scrubbed to the point where we had a unanimous support to advance that to the finance committee, which has a strong interest in looking at that also. So that's progress. And we agreed upon a process for when a counselor may speak for the entire council, which essentially was to establish a resolution process so that a resolution would be presented on an agenda. The content of the public statement on behalf of the entire council would be set forth, more or less in the content of the resolution. And therefore, we have a organized way of approaching that. This, I attended the sustainability committee meeting. They spent a great deal of time talking about the recycling outreach program, which is to check. We've got the problem, I think everybody knows by now, of too much contamination in our recycling bins. And we've got some interns hired to try and do a program of checking to make sure that we're in better compliance than we are. We also talked about a sustainability reserve account. It's a concept. It would be a source of funds for sustainability projects. And they talked in terms of a funding mechanism. You have building codes and you have what's called stretch laws, where if you make a basic compliance, you have a fee associated with that. But if you stretch and reach a higher level of performance in terms of efficiencies in your building, then you would be exempt from that. So that was also talked about. Those are the two committees I think I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Katerina?
Yeah, very quickly, very important ordinance meeting on Thursday, June twentieth at four P. M. We are looking for public input on marijuana rules and regulations in the town of Scarborough. We want to give direction to our town attorney, who will be working over the summer on draft ordinances. So please come. It's at four o'clock here at town hall. So anyone with any interest in what's going on with marijuana retail, it's Thursday, the twentieth of June. Okay, historic preservation met the other night. We continue to work on listings and, and looking at what houses in town may be included in a list for historic preservation. For the public, we don't have, like Portland does, real strict rules about historic preservation. You can and can't. But we certainly encourage people with any interest, if you think you live in a historic building, to, you can reach out to me if you'd like. Because there may be some, a few benefits to you if you ever thought you wanted to go to code enforcement and get some help and whatever. And they are absolutely thrilled with the schoolhouse building, the money that we were able to give to, to, for the, what do I want?
Foundation.
Thank you. I can't even talk anymore. The foundation of roof work. The Marys are set to start working on that in July. So that will get done sooner rather than later, which is, which is good to know. Long range planning is meeting Friday at eight A. M. Bright and early at the Sedco Building, third floor, for anyone who's interested in attending that. And then Maine Municipal Legislative Policy Committee, of course, they keep us up to date on what's going on. Things change by the minute right now because they're trying to get done in legislature by June nineteenth, the statutory adjournment. We are cautiously optimistic that we will get an increase in municipal revenue sharing. So please keep your fingers crossed and let your legislators know that you'd like to see some more money returned to the town from the state. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Sure. The, I think I, well, the communication committee, we, we canceled the meeting, I believe, last week, but from the previous meeting. Just to remind people, we, we came up with a recycling survey that is available at the voting booth. It's available here in the town hall lobby right now as well.
Mm-hmm.
No more?
No more.
Where did it go?
We moved the voting into the office.
Oh. Is the survey going to go with it? No. Okay, no survey, no recycling survey.
Actually, we had probably five people that took it.
Okay, well, I was one of them. I took the recycling survey.
I was one of them too.
I got a, I got a six out of eight. So I do have some work to do because I did not go eight for eight on the recycling survey. We had a joint communities, we canceled the regular scheduled meeting simply because we had a joint communication committee, committee meeting with the BOE to discuss some budget outreach. It does look like it is more within the scope of the BOE to spend funds and to actively promote the budget. So we left it essentially the way that meeting left is the BOE is, is taking the ball and running on most of the communications for that. As a reminder, on June twenty-fifth, we have our second roundtable, quarterly roundtable sessions. And this one will be at Blue Point School, I believe, and that is at six thirty. So it's a Tuesday night, six thirty P. M. to eight P. M. That's June twenty-fifth at Blue Point School. For my liaison reports, the one I have the most is really just a thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. They hosted a few of us at the table here, actually all of us at the table here. And a thank you to Atria as well. We had a great dinner put on by the Chamber of Commerce and Atria. And I got to meet some new people at my table. And overall, it was a great experience. So I just wanted to thank the Chamber of Commerce and Atria for holding that event for us.
Great. And all of my committees have been covered. So we'll move right into the town manager's report.
A few quick points of interest. As the council's aware, we were going out to our annual bond sale at the time of year. I'm pleased to report that our ratings had been affirmed by both Moody's and Standard and Poor. We had very positive conversations. I would not be surprised, given the way those conversations went, that we'll, moving toward a positive outlook, if not an upgrade. So very good trending. Those reports were sent out to you. They're a fairly quick read, so I encourage you to take a look at those. I do expect this will be a matter of discussion at the finance committee meeting later this month. Then today, we actually had bond sale and have awarded the bonds. The interest rate that we chose was two point four eight percent, so very favorable rates. We had five bidders, so good activity there. There was sizable bid premium, and we expected that might be a possibility. It was terrific that Counselor Hayes was able to join us in that call and make some decisions. We've decided to use the premium to, to basically buy down the amount we're bonding. So we're going to bond four hundred thousand dollars less than was authorized.
Great.
We're paying, covering the F Y twenty interest costs of about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, covering the full cost of issuance. And then there's actually about forty thousand dollars in excess premium beyond that. So very pleased with that result. In the area of housekeeping, on June ten, there is a stormwater MS four permit education. This is an annual requirement for elected officials. It's being held with the planning board. You've all been invited. If you can come, we certainly would appreciate that. It's fairly painless, I promise. But it's, it's an important thing. We need to report that we've actually held this training to be able to check off that requirement. I'll let Counselor speak to our experience this week, taking a tour of the Edge, one of the Edge Sports facilities in Wellesley, Mass. And just to foreshadow for your next meeting, staff is preparing what will, what I think will be probably the first of multiple discussions around growth. And our intent in the first instance is to really better understand what, where we've been and, and really diagnose and establish a baseline of facts that I think we can all work from. It does appear that we may have some part attacks, hardship abatement matters that may need to be attended to. We have two applications, and so we're processing those. So those may need to be attended to on the nineteenth as well. And I guess while I've got the floor, I just wanted, Counselor, Baybine is not here, but I just wanted to publicly acknowledge certainly a service to this town. And on a personal note, he's been a, a very good, certainly very supportive of staff, a great collaborator, and one that will continue in his way of public service, I think, in Augusta. So we hope to have him back at a public meeting. We do have a bit of a parting gift for him. And perhaps he can give us some good news on the budget when he comes. Thank you.
All right, we'll move right on to council member comments. And we'll start at this end of the table. Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just pick up where Tom alluded on Monday of this week. Counselor Donovan, myself, and Mr. Hall went down to Wellesley, Massachusetts to essentially scope out the Edge Sports Complex that is about a month to two months away from opening its doors. The reason for that is that there is a possibility that the sports complex would be looking to secure some space in the Downs. And it's an opportunity, it's to explore, for us to explore the possibility of, you know, how could the town be involved? Could the town, is that possibly the solution to our community center question? Nothing by any stretch of the imagination has been realistically discussed, but it was a great, great to get down there to see the facility. It is massive. It's a hundred and forty thousand square feet. So it's quite impressive. It was very educational. And the two gentlemen, was it Sean and Chris or?
Brian and Chris.
Brian and Chris. The two gentlemen that head up the project appeared to be great partners. If we did work with them, they're incredibly straightforward. And I found them to be candid and honest. And I think that they'd be easy to work with. But again, with all that said, we're just in the fact finding phase and just to see if it's something that is worth exploring further. So. And that's all I have.
Counselor Katerina?
Yeah, I think people in town have forgotten that there's an election on Tuesday. The turnout has been abysmal, to say the least. I find it most disappointing as someone who was an election worker for a long, long time. And I, I think, I don't think I've ever missed an election in my life. I'm one of those. But that being said, please turn out Tuesday. Absentee balloting's done, so you can't come in to, oh, I apologize. I thought it was all done. Tomorrow's the last day, so get in here tomorrow. Otherwise, it's going to be Tuesday to, to come in and vote. The school budget's on the ballot. There's a Zabago Alliance issue that I'd love to see people vote yes on because it means an extra eighty-three thousand dollars for the schools, plus help them to do cooperative buying, which is always a better way to buy. We also have two wonderful people running for one town council seat. I wish we had two seats for them, but there's only one seat this time around. And there's a question on there too about whether you want to continue having the school budget go out to vote. And that's required by state law every three years. We have to ask that. So if you don't vote, I don't want to hear you complaining, but you'd best get out and vote because that, to me, is your duty as a citizen. So that's my speech for tonight.
Thank you. We're moving on to Counselor Donovan.
Yeah, as Counselor Johnson was saying, we created something of an ad hoc committee. Counselors Foley, Johnson, and, and I all expressed interest in the Edge Sports proposal. They have had a fair amount of contact with the Scarborough Downs people. And because of the, the interest in the community for a community center for a long time, and the size of this private undertaking, we are really trying to dig in and do some educating of ourselves on this. The trip to Wellesley to see this facility, it is eye opening. It is two hockey rinks, a Olympic-sized swimming pool, and a ball field, all undercover. And then associated physical therapy, community space. It's really quite impressive. Now, I'm not sure that that's what's going to be planned for the Scarborough Downs area. But these people do have the ability, they've got a dozen projects or more done. They've done it. And, and they seem to be able to have the ability to put forward a lot of what the community would say was high on our list. It was very good to travel down with Todd Souza and town manager Tom Hall because they really gave an important perspective that Paul and I shared pretty strongly. We just didn't articulate it the way they did, that a community center is there to serve the community, not necessarily the entire region. These people have to rent space. So they've got a business motive to look beyond the four corners of Scarborough. But we, as the community of Scarborough, have a strong interest in looking out for our citizens. And so that was, seniors were very high on the list. And I think that seniors will appreciate that because Mr. Souza seems to be very focused on making sure that whatever comes of this proposal, that, that we look long range in terms of meeting the needs of those in the community who, who would really benefit from it. So it's, there's nothing like it in the greater Portland area. I think we certainly could conclude that. That was quite remarkable.
Thank you. Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Tom and the, the town staff for their good work through the budget process. And, you know, I think we're in a much better place. We're not done yet. We've got to get, turn out the vote. But hopefully, you know, the quiet is not necessarily a bad thing, you know, that we don't, you know, really seem to have had a all-in better dialogue this year. And hopefully, that'll lead to a better outcome and, and hopefully, a view of how we might deal with similar challenging issues together as a town. So I'm really encouraged by that. At the same time, I'm looking forward to maybe a little bit slower schedule over the summer. So in spite of all the data requests. And finally, I'm really pleased to know that, that Counselor Johnson and I will not be dispatched to Bethel to take the stormwater training like we did for our, our counselor training.
He'll be Preskyle. He'll send us up to Preskyle.
Bethel?
Oh, you guys had fun.
It was fun. It was good fun.
All set? All right, well, I am so shocked and thrilled and privileged that I'm the only one that's going to get to say this, but tonight and this weekend is hugely monumental for our seniors. And this past week, I had the privilege of going to Michigan and watching my niece and nephew graduate from high school. And as our seniors here in Scarborough are graduating this week, just want to, you know, remind them that truly, it's an exciting time in a young person's life. And, and the world really is there for your taking. So make good choices and enjoy celebrating with your family and friends and, but most importantly, stay safe through the celebrations. So congratulations to all the Scarborough seniors. Also, again, it's been said, but can't be said enough, we've got to get out and vote. That is your voice, and it's your chance to weigh in. I do think, you know, I'm, I'm with Counselor Hamel in hoping and thinking that the quiet is, is a positive thing. And, but I also know that a low voter turnout, no matter which way the election comes out, people will point fingers at that and say, well, that's because nobody came out to vote. So let's have high numbers regardless so that we can all feel good about that process. That's important. And then last but not least, I know tonight was to be Counselor Baybine's last meeting with us. And although he and I often don't agree on a lot of things, I do have a huge amount of respect for anyone who chooses to step up and serve. It is hugely time consuming, and nobody does it for the fame and fortune. I can promise you that. And he has served for, I mean, he has told us many times, thirteen, fourteen years, something like that, with discontinuous terms. years, something like that, with discontinuous terms. That's a really long time to serve your town, so he certainly deserves our respect and gratitude for that. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Check it out.
All those in favor? And Tody wins the night.
Thank you.